Good evening. I want to call the public hearing of the Salem School Committee on the FY25 budget to order at 7:07 PM. I want to note that this meeting is being held both in person and hybrid with instructions on the agenda. I'm going to read a brief summary of our public participation policy. I did want to note for the record that we are joined by member Campbell online, so all votes taken this evening will be done via roll call. So the Salem School Committee would like to hear from members of the public on issues that affect the school district and that are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. I want to also note that Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it, and the instructions are on the agenda. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to move to open the public hearing on the FY25 budget. Motion made by member Manning. Seconded by member Hoffman. All those in favor via roll call vote. Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four members voting, four in the affirmative. And the motion carries. The public hearing is now open. And I am just going to recommend to my colleagues that, as we've done in the past as a committee, that we keep the public hearing open until next week's school committee meeting. So I know we have an agenda to close that meeting, but I would ask that instead we leave it open, just so that way at the next meeting, if we do want to hear additional feedback from members of the public, we can do so in advance of our vote on the proposed budget. So at this time, I'm going to turn, prior to just having public comment, I'm going to turn to the superintendent to just provide some opening remarks.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to share just some comments. I've already shared in emails in the prior presentation that I gave, well, it's now two weeks ago now, when we first gave the initial presentation. But we have shared our full budget proposal in our presentation, which is now in multiple languages on our website. The translations have now been completed. We've recommended a budget of $74,592,616, which represents an increase of 4.83% from FY24, which is a larger-than-average annual increase. And so we're grateful for the support of the school committee and the city of Salem and their partnership on behalf of students. Obviously, a budget is always a statement of values, and this budget is no exception. We built this budget with our strategic priorities in mind. We have four: elevate learning, empowering educators, centering belonging, and strengthening our foundation. We believe that it will enable us to create a culture of belonging for our students that allows them to be locally engaged, globally connected, and fully prepared to thrive in the diverse world and changing world that we live in. That's our vision statement. The budget reflects a complex funding landscape that we tried the best we could to explain, and I'm not sure how successful we were, but we did our best. We're pleased to share that our student enrollment has grown, which is a good trend, and we hope that that continues. That does increase the funding available to the district and expands certainly our cultural wealth. That has come with added immigrants to our city. We've had an influx of migrants, which has been a great addition to our community and has also represented additional resources. And we're very grateful to our community for welcoming all these new families to Salem. At the same time, we're losing significant relief funding. The pandemic relief, which everybody knows as ESAR, is sunsetting. The district received almost $15 million over the last four years, and that has allowed us to meet student needs by expanding innovative strategies, programs, tutoring, pre-K, some additional counseling supports, a lot of facilities upgrades, as well as all the COVID -- I can't believe I have to still utter that word, but all the COVID work that we did during those trying few years. But we now must choose which parts of the ESAR investments can be added to the budget. To preserve some of the critical ESAR positions, including pre-K classrooms and behavior specialists, which we're now calling engagement specialists, and to expand staffing in areas where enrollment is growing, especially for multilingual learners and special education, and to preserve our ability to pay competitive salaries for employees, this budget includes rightsizing in staff and programs. And there's some rightsizing that we've done in order to meet those demands that I just spoke of, and to make sure that we're funding critical ESAR roles that we have come to believe are mission-critical and aligned to our strategic direction. We have recommended reducing investments in areas of declining enrollment or places with staffing levels that were based on larger historic enrollments, resulting in the recommended elimination of some school and some central office-based positions. Non-personal expenses are also increasing, especially in transportation, utilities, and out-of-district placements for students with disabilities. Our personnel costs and rapidly increasing non-personal expenses are outpacing our annual appropriation. So as a result, we have a structural deficit. I want to be clear that we are carrying a structural deficit and are proposing to close our gaps by relying on one-time reserve funds to balance this budget. Otherwise, there would have to be the elimination of more positions, as you're seeing in other communities around Salem and throughout the country, throughout the state of Massachusetts. So we do raise a flag that cuts will likely need to be made in future years, but this will buy us some time and analysis in order to mitigate the impact and to make sure that any adjustments we make in the future are done so equitably and thoughtfully. So tonight is the public hearing. I'm really interested in hearing what folks have to say. We have received some comments. If I could share some of those right now that I have shared with the school committee. We do have an SPS budget at salemk12.org, and we've received four comments, actually three comments, from the public. Two came from parents. One was about -- I'm sorry, four comments. Two from parents, two from staff. One was about lockers and wanting to support purchasing lockers, or bigger lockers here at Collins Middle School, that the lockers don't fit the student needs. And we've heard that from families. A lot of the families in the LPAC have shared the concern that the students' equipment, sports equipment, music equipment doesn't fit in the lockers. And so a parent requested that we think about purchasing larger lockers, specifically for Collins. I didn't hear about for other schools, but specifically here. Another request was made to offer Spanish classes and to fund a Spanish language program throughout the district. They appreciate the dual-language programming that we have, but they want every child to have some level of Spanish, which frankly is a necessity to be able to speak two languages in this community. And the request is to make sure that every child in elementary school and middle school have access to foreign language. So that was another request made. There was a request made regarding the physical education teacher at ECC. That position is being eliminated. It was an ESAR-funded position, and there was a request from a staff member to maintain the position. Also spoke very highly of the employee and wanted to maintain that position and that employee in the district. I did share that with the school committee. And then there was also a request made from a staff member to make -- when we talk about the 33 new positions we're adding, to be clear which ones are really not new because they may be new to the budget, but they're not new to the district because they were ESAR-funded. And so to be clear or more transparent about that in our budget booklet, which we can do and I think will do in advance of the school committee, potential school committee vote a week from yesterday. Did I leave anything out, Elizabeth? So in the end, I just want to extend my gratitude to all the folks that played a part in this budget creation, the many people that gave us feedback. We heard from a lot of folks through this process. It is a long, arduous process from January, and this has been as tricky a year as I've ever seen in my 10 years as a superintendent, given, you know, the fiscal reality that we're in. So I'm grateful that we're able to, I think, provide something that can continue the good work that's happening across Salem Public Schools and support our schools in the way we need to to move forward with our strategic plan. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Strike. Really appreciate you setting that context for members of the public. So at this time, I'm going to turn to my school committee secretary and just ask our school committee secretary and ask if there's any online public comment that's been submitted.
No online comments.
Okay. So at this time, I would invite members of the public that are here. Please feel free to join us at the dais. If you could just name, address. Thank you. You know the drill.
Good evening, Dr. Strike and members of the school committee. My name is Anne Berman. I'm president of the Salem Teachers Union. I am also a general music teacher at Bates Elementary School. I've been teaching there for just shy of 30 years, in one school, in one district. It's a record. As a Salem educator and union leader, I am deeply invested in the long-term best interests of Salem students, their families, and our educators, and interests we no doubt share. And that interest starts with the budget. The city budget is a reflection of our values. What we choose to fund or not fund truly shows where the city's education priorities lie. One of those top priorities has to be educator retention, and here are a few of the reasons why. Out of 322 districts in Massachusetts, we, Salem, we are 309th in the state as far as educator retention goes. Going deeper, out of all the large cities in the state, only three other districts with more than 150 educators have a lower retention rate. Those districts are Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge. Compared to our North Shore neighbors, our retention rate is 9% lower than Lynn, which is just above Salem in the percentile ranks. On the North Shore, Salem has the lowest-paid educators, so it really is no wonder why we also have the highest educator turnover. We all agree that this is really bad for our students. They cannot thrive when there is constant turnover in their school, let alone their classroom, if an educator leaves mid-year. Clearly, something has to change. We believe the city knows this. The current budget touts investment in new educator positions, but upon closer look, most of these positions already existed, thanks to ESAR funds. These roles are now being funded in a new way, but are not new roles. The actual new roles equate to five teacher-unit roles through a combination of full- and part-time positions and five PSRP unit roles. However, you're reducing the following student-facing roles: 12 full-time teacher-unit roles and two PSRP unit roles. Of the 16 roles being eliminated, only two are central office roles, both of which are important, but neither of which are student-facing roles. Additionally, the positions listed as swaps include swapping out two educators for two administrative positions. I understand that city finances are no easy matter, and a lot of time went into this plan. The city is trying to right-size the budget by letting go of staff in the school district, yet most of those cuts are towards vital classroom positions and not administrative positions. In addition, while the city is rightsizing the budget, our educators will be expected to maintain their same workload and pay until contract negotiations are settled. The district is effectively passing the buck down to educators and students with larger class sizes and less supports. Page 40 of the budget book shows the average class size currently. I caution you when discussing averages to remember that there's always a high number and a low number to get to an average. I know that the fifth-grade classes at my school average 25 each, including our students in our sub-separate program, who are mainstreamed as much as possible because that's the right thing to do. This number is much higher than the stated 17.25 students in fifth grade, again on budget book page 40. This budget clearly shows an interest in keeping up the status quo, and that's not good enough anymore. It's an easy solution to balance the budget, but a bad solution for Salem kids and educators. I truly believe we are all on the same page when it comes to wanting what's best for our community. I've said this to Drs. Strike many times. We both want the same outcome at the end of our tenure here in Salem. Mine's coming up faster than yours, I think.
How do I get there, Anne?
Four years. Four, four years. And that is wanting to make Salem schools the best on the North Shore, if not the state. And we are traveling on parallel paths to make that happen. I'm here to say that Salem's amazing educators deserve to keep their jobs. They deserve manageable workloads. They deserve competitive pay. They deserve paid parental leave and other wellness supports, and that's the recipe for retaining our educators. Thank you.
I got here early and signed up first because I'm an old man. I got to go home. Some of you may not know me, so I thought I'd introduce myself. I'm sure Ms. Hoffman probably doesn't know me.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Brendan Walsh. Five West Terrace in Salem. I was unfortunate enough to sit in your seats for 12 years after I retired after 37 years in the school system and five years later lost my mind and ran for this job. And let me tell you, it is a thankless job, and I do appreciate what you try to do. I understand the pressures and difficulties of your thankless job, and thank you for giving of yourselves. I also want to point out that I admire Dr. Strike a great deal. He has brought an incredible amount of stability and confidence to this system, and it is greatly appreciated. That's it. I'm here because, a little bit of my own background, I was the Title I Director at the time in the Salem Public Schools, and in that position, I was the person who brought preschool education, publicly-funded preschool education to Salem. And realizing that that did not start early enough, I brought the, what was then the Parent-Child Program, it's now called Parent-Child Plus, to Salem to start trying to help two- and three-year-olds. And I understand, with that being said, I just wanted to give you an idea of where I'm coming from on this and why an 83-year-old man would drag himself out to a meeting like this. I understand that this is, with the disappearance of COVID-related supplements, a difficult, difficult time fiscally. I understand that adding to the Parent-Child Plus budget this year might well be impossible. But I must remind you that the earlier a child develops their vocabulary, the better they will do in school. And the person or persons who can most help in that respect are the child's parents, whether they themselves are, quote, "educated." Why? It's so simple. Because if mommy or daddy reads to a two-year-old, it's not just anyone reading to them. It is the center of the child's universe. And that makes what is being done more valuable than anything else in their lives. That's not replaceable by any program. It's that simple. That said, I understand that this year it might be difficult because of the loss of funds to do anything about it, but I would hope that the members of the committee would keep that in mind as we go forward. In addition, I would hope that a way can be found at some point soon to bring the program back to being more under local control. If we can't serve everyone, then let us serve those who can most benefit, who might be lost forever without it. Joyce Parent was the person who -- I was a very simple man. I had a parent program, and I had to hire someone to run it, so I hired Mrs. Parent. That made sense to me. Joyce Parent headed this program, and for most of its existence, spent many hours making sure that the limited funding served those who needed it most. I'm not sure that level of effort and local knowledge exists in today's program. Despite the limits on my time caused by life's twists and turns, I'll be glad to assist this effort in any and all ways possible. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Catherine Bishi. I live at 54 Derby Street in Salem. I'm a proud SPS educator who has worked at Collins Middle School as one of the learning skills teachers for the past eight years, which I think, similar to Anne, might also kind of be a record for that position. I am also someone who acutely feels the stress of living in an increasingly expensive city while being severely underpaid. If I was being charged market value for my current apartment, I wouldn't be able to afford to live on my own in the city that I work. I love living and working in Salem, but this will likely no longer be the case if our salaries continue to not match a basic middle-class lifestyle. If you ask staff members at Collins, they'll mention that I'm always here. I don't think I've actually left this building today. I get to work at 6:30 in order to have everything ready for my students, as my prep time is not guaranteed due to the needs of my students during the day. I spend extra time at school, both paid and unpaid, because my students deserve the very best. The needs of our district and our students have only increased at a rate much higher than our salary. During the budget presentation, the district expressed that their goal was to right-size the budget, but what we really need to do is right-size the profession. I agree with many of the goals of the district that has been outlined in previous presentations. We should be focusing on individualizing learning, providing hands-on and multimodal opportunities for learning, and preparing students for what life looks like in a very different world than what most of us grew up in. In order to do this, though, we need to provide all educators with pay and working conditions that help support our students without burning out our educators. All of these goals take time and energy, which we are not adequately compensated for now. We cannot continue to be asked to do more with less. It is hard to have a work-life balance when your to-do list is never done, and it only gets longer with each new initiative and without additional compensation. These goals of the district also require additional staff to help meet the increasing needs of the students in front of us. It is disheartening to see the district say it prioritizes special education, and yet additional paraprofessionals are not hired, as well as student-facing positions being cut. We have many positions this year not be filled, but just because the role isn't filled, that doesn't mean the need isn't there. This means that needs of our highest need students are not having their needs met. SPS educators are burnt out. We are underpaid, overworked, and feel underappreciated. We can address this in the budget by paying educators competitively and making sure there are enough educators to keep class sizes smaller and more evenly distributed. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Annie Cruz, Six Heritage Drive. I do work for the district, but I am actually going to put my sweater up because I'm here to talk to you as a parent. I do have two kids in the Salem Public School District. One is sophomore at Salem High School and a third grader at Horace Mann. And I am so glad I work in the system now because I get to understand a little better of how things work in the background that some of the times parents don't get to see. I have seen my child, my nine-year-old child, is on an IEP, right? And I am so thankful for this group of people here because my kid has finally -- emotional -- has gotten to where he's supposed to be in third grade. Fernando is a kid that came from COVID, being at home as a kindergarten with a computer in front of him, trying to learn how to, you know, mute, not mute, put your hand up, do exercises right in front of the computer, take a 10-minute break, okay, bye. Come back, and they refocus. And that ability of him focusing was not there when he finally went to a building. With that being said, we, the people that work in the buildings, we are dealing with an enormous thing, enormous amount of things that respectfully the school committee has no idea, right? We have been hit by students, right? And we don't know what happens with that information. We don't know if you guys get to see that data. We have dealt with parents coming into our buildings, you know, really upset about things that happen in the buildings. But with that being said, our teachers are underpaid, and it feels like it's an uncared thing with the amount of work that they do. In the building that I work at, there's two kindergartens with 24 and 22 students. Those two kindergartens started at 25 students each one, and one of those classes has special needs students. Thankfully, we were able to provide the right services to three out of those 25 kids, and they are now in programs that are appropriate for what they need to be able to exceed and meet expectations. So me, as a parent, Annie Cruz, now the Salem Public Schools employee, ask you that when you guys are looking into the budget, you actually, if possible, visit our schools. Go and take a look in the classrooms. Go and see what these people are doing, what I am doing facilitating for families. Like, I know my job role as a family engagement facilitator, it's overseeing. I don't think you guys understand the work we do and the emotional, psychological load we carry for our families. So as we're making changes and thinking for the future, Salem has brought a lot of money in from tourists since early March, April for the past few years after COVID. So there is money in the city that can be properly allocated. As I pay my taxes, I also have to think about it if with what I get paid as a single person at home with two kids, if I'm going to be able to afford rent for next year, and if I have to be able to move out of my town that I have spent half of my life leaving after leaving my own country, the Dominican Republic. So please think about that. Think about what we go through in our buildings that the people sitting in offices don't get to see. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Tucker, 39 School Street, Newbury, Mass. I'm here to speak on behalf of a colleague who can't be here tonight. Dear members of the school committee, as part of the budget next year, Collins Middle School is planning to eliminate one of the general music positions. The rationale is budgetary based on projected enrollment. As the coordinator of music, I'm hoping to advocate to keep this position, but possibly reassign it to a district-wide role that can help with some of the overscheduling in other buildings. Right now, we have wide discrepancies amongst the schools in regards to how many students each music teacher teaches. For example, at Witchcraft Heights, one full-time music teacher is responsible for 600-plus students, both general music and chorus, while at another elementary school, a full-time music teacher is responsible for 350 to 400 students. While the contractual hours may look equitable on paper, the student load isn't. Additionally, with this position, it would allow the instrumental music team some needed and added flexibility in scheduling across the city. Each school has more and more specific needs to scheduling requests that we are often unable to accommodate due to travel time, preps, teaching spaces, et cetera. With this person, we could potentially solve some of these problems. Finally, while I don't mean to bring individual people into the mix, the position being eliminated happens to be filled with a first-year Salem Public Schools graduate. He's exactly the type of person we want to have in our district because he is committed to giving back to his community. He is deeply involved in multiple facets of our programming, and losing him is not only devastating to the students at CMS, but to the various other elements of the music program in which he is involved. While I know retaining this position does not reduce the budget as was intended, it does not add to the budget either, since this is a position that already exists. Rather, I'm hoping you'll consider leaving the position in the budget, but reallocating the resources to areas within the district that have the need. Thank you for consideration. Ben Chertok. I'm going to go off the cuff here, so forgive me if I stutter. Cheryl Zimmerman.
Cheryl Zimmerman, 8 Hazel Street. I will start as a mom. I have two girls in fifth grade over at Salt and Stall and yes, their class sizes are about 25. In their classes, I do know that there is a lot of special ed needs and the teachers do great with it. Who can talk and write at the same time? But having 25 students and having students pulled in and brought back and, you know, summer worked within the classroom, you know, I mean, of course, I'm going by what my kids are telling me, but I also know how special ed works and it must be very hard for the teacher to kind of keep a continuum with 25 kids by herself, with kids coming in and kids going out. But to that fact, I am a paraprofessional in Salem. I have been doing this for 26 years and it is not because I don't have the education because I can go back to school and finish my education at any point. I've been asked by the first teacher I worked with, why haven't I done that? And I can tell you the reason why is because I love what I do. And I realized within the second year of my job that teachers' caseloads are crazy and I just didn't want that. I wanted to be able to work with students. And I kind of see teachers with, especially with the special ed caseloads, not that they can't work with students, but their lives are just so busy whether, you know, they're servicing students and, you know, back when I first started, we had a paraprofessional per classroom. So, in high needs, I'll say in high needs. So, there was always an assistant there if something happened. I now am the only paraprofessional in a program of four teachers and at least one independent student at all times working. So, I can kind of get a little crazy trying to go to all these classrooms and, you know, one teacher in particular, and I will say it is a math class, you know, the students are on so many different levels. They're in high school, but their learning gaps due to their disabilities over the years and COVID, I hate saying, like you said, I hate saying this word, I wish it never existed, you know, took so much away from a lot of our kids and especially our special ed kids, both socially, emotionally, and education, that, you know, some of our kids are, they didn't learn their times tables and if they don't know that, they don't know the division. And we're trying to teach them geometry and algebra two and, you know, having a teacher, granted, I'm in a very small program and there might be eight students in the classroom, but she's going from one student to the next, to the next, to the next, and then she's, you know, trying to get her work done and her caseload done and calling parents and you don't know how many times she's called me and it's six o'clock at night and she's just going home. I mean, it's at least three nights a week. But, um, back to the budget piece and for support staff, I've seen it quite often that paraprofessionals are hired. And when we get our hands on an educated paraprofessional who has the ability and the softness in their heart to understand our special needs kids, and they get their paycheck after a Christmas break and sometimes it's $20 because we're hourly and we don't get paid for vacations and a lot of holidays and things like that, they can't afford that, you know, and they leave, you know. So, we are on the bottom of the pay scales, but like I said, I chose to stop my education and I chose to do what I did and I'm just fortunate enough to have a husband. And way back when I started, I was working three jobs because I love these kids and I get along great with these kids, but it takes a special person, you know. But like I said, the caseloads and what the teachers go through and, you know, I think they deserve more, as do our PSRP units, you know, and all the people that are face-to-face with our students. So, I just want to throw that out there.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to come to the podium?
Going to write my name first because I cannot talk and write.
Take your time, take your time.
I'm Lissa Levine and I live at 18 Bartlett Street in Beverly. I've been teaching for about 10 years and this is my seventh year in Salem. I'm nervous because I don't usually talk to adults, I usually talk to children, so please bear with me. This year, I'm currently a reading specialist at Carlton and I am the face or a face behind one of the positions that is being proposed to be cut in the budget. I'm speaking today to ask you to reconsider cutting these positions of the educators that work directly with students, taking away direct instruction in literacy, social, emotional, social, emotional support, or any interventions, not only hurting the educators who are losing their position, but more importantly, the students who they work with and support. We really desperately need these educators in the positions that they're in. In order to continue our work with raising equity across the district, we must keep these positions so that all students can get equitable access to their education and the support that they need and deserve. Also, from the literacy perspective, we've increased universal screening guidelines that has also increased the amount of assessing required for students in grades K to three. This has increased the interventions we're providing. And when providing these essential interventions and instruction to all, to a lot of students who are below, we're providing them to a lot of students who are below grade level and taking away these literacy positions may keep these students below grade level because they won't get as much specific tier-two instruction as classroom teachers are so short on their time. We are working extremely hard to provide our tier-two, tier-one instruction, assessing the literacy data, using the data to plan and implement instruction, and providing literacy support to teachers. Taking away positions like the reading specialist or SEL supports or math supports will, like, definitely directly and negatively affect students and their learning. This also negatively and directly affects the school as a whole because either the work that that person is providing is not happening anymore or most more likely is being added to the plates of the educators that are left, adding to stress burnout and adding to students not truly getting what they need. If you want a more equitable district, please reconsider keeping these essential positions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Harrington. I live at 15 Lafayette in Danvers, but I teach upstairs at Collins Middle School. I'm a math teacher and so I've been doing some math. So, there is, we've heard the word equity a lot and there is a lot of inequity in the amount of prep time teachers get in our district based on what building they're in, their grade level. So, this is just for me personally. I get 250 minutes of prep time a week as a middle school teacher. I teach two grade levels and so that means that I have 125 minutes per grade for a week to plan and prepare for my students. That's 25 minutes a day. So, let's say theoretically that it takes me five minutes to look at the curriculum materials I'm given to teach my next lesson. And I take 10 minutes to adapt the materials that I know my kids need more support here, I know these students are going to need the help here, gather those things from what I have, make them new because this kid needs this and this didn't go well last year. Let's say that takes 10 minutes. If I then take five minutes to review student work that they did the previous day to figure out how am I going to small group, what differentiation do they need for their practice today? If I take two minutes to make my copies and digitally assign the things that they need in like three minutes, oh, three minutes to make their homework, I've used up my 25. I've used up my 25 and I have not talked to a single parent. This is not accounted for the kid who's having a meltdown at the end of class and so for the first five minutes of prep time, we're like calming down so that they can transition their day, making the room for students who need that help. It doesn't account for the time that I am asking another teacher to mentor me during that prep period or where I'm giving support to a colleague. There's so much that that 25 minutes per day can't possibly account for. And what it means, and that was all assuming that it actually only took me that amount of time, it takes me much more time than what I said I was doing then. So, what that means is one of two things. It either means that I'm doing two to three hours of work for free every night after my three-year-old goes to bed, every day that I have school the next day, I'm doing two or three hours of work for free. It could mean that. Or it could mean that things are not getting done that my students need to do well in school. And I'm not going to advocate that anybody work for free, so I'm not going to say which choice I make, but I think it's clear what those of us who are teachers in the room, what choice we make when there are things that our kids need. We want to see those kids get what they need and have those things get done. And so, when we think about the budget, no one should be working for free. And no one should especially be working for free when their paid work is the lowest compensated in the region. And so, I appreciate the, um, the parents who have echoed how hard they know that we work and that really it's all about serving their kids and giving them the best. So, thank you.
Beg your pardon. Erin, did you have an opportunity to sign in on the sheet?
I do not say it, I'm so sorry.
No worries, no worries. I think if you're, whoever may follow you could do that, or if you could do that by the end of the meeting, that'd be great. Thank you, just so we can have it for the record. Other members of the public that wish to provide testimony at today's hearing? One, twice, sold, okay. So, at this time, I'm going to move us to the next item on our agenda, which is, well, I actually asked that we not move to close the public hearing and to keep it open until the next school committee meeting. I do think that that requires a vote, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to allow the public meeting to remain open until our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, which is April 29th at 7:00 PM. Would anybody be willing to make that motion?
Just a clarification, you're leaving it open till the, leaving it open till the public comment section at the beginning of the next meeting?
That's correct. That's correct.
We don't have to stay here for a week.
You don't have to stay here for a week, that's right. We would leave it open for the next, you're right.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Motion made by member, member Manning, and that was member Miranda, thank you. Note for the record that member Miranda joined the meeting probably and the secretary has made note of when that might have been, so apologies, member Miranda, if I didn't capture you in the attendance, but we'll make sure that that's reflected. So, now I'll ask for a roll call vote. Member Manning?
Yep.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz, five members voting, five in the affirmative. The matter carries, we'll keep the public hearing open. And now, next item on the agenda would be, I would like to entertain a motion to open school committee, to open the school committee meeting for further discussion on the FY25 budget, if we feel that's necessary. So, I'll just take a pulse check of members of the committee in the event that there's anything that we want to share with the superintendent, any clarifying questions, so. All right, I'm seeing nodding heads here, so, but shaking heads, okay. So, member Campbell and member Miranda, do you all have anything that you want to share? Do we need to open up the meeting?
I do not. You know, I took a lot of notes during the public comment and will be, you know, reaching out, I think, to the superintendent if I have any additional clarification.
Great.
I do not at this time.
Excellent. So, at this time, I want to thank the members of the public that have come forward to advocate. As folks heard, we'll continue to keep the public hearing open at our next school committee meeting, so there will be some more opportunities. And I know that throughout this process, individual members, I will direct them to continue to engage with the superintendent around any concerns, questions, issues, or additional data that they need in order to arrive at a decision. And so, with that, I will entertain a motion to...
Okay. Sorry, I just, folks should still email SPS Budget if they have feedback. I do share everything with the school committee that I receive and I've been forwarding every email I've received, it goes directly to me and to Elizabeth. And, you know, I may be following up with some people with some follow-up questions because we may make, you know, there's always the possibility of adjustments that are made between now and Monday night when we, we're going to ask the school committee to vote on the budget. And so, we may present some adjustments based on some feedback we heard and, you know, school committee members will reach out in the meantime, also with feedback from this evening or other input that they've received. So, we real, I do really appreciate people coming up, you know, sharing. I see it as a sign of strength when people come up and it's not easy to come in front of a microphone. I mean, I guess I'm the boss, I don't like to think of myself, or as Ann likes to say, management. And, but I do appreciate that people feel comfortable coming up and sharing what they have to say. I'd rather know where people stand and I know that's not easy for people to do and so I just want to thank you for having the courage to come up to the microphone and share your input.
Thank you, superintendent. And I'll add budget to our, one of, I don't know, six calls that you and I have scheduled for this week to check in. So, we'll make sure to connect. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from a member of the committee.
So, move.
Motion made by member Manning. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Hoffman. All those in favor, roll call vote. Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz, yes. Five members voting, five in the affirmative. Meeting is adjourned at 7:53 PM. Thank you.